The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council meeting of November 18th, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. And Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Gavin Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings, such as this one. Due to the governor's -- whoops, that is the end of that section. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Due to the governor's executive order which waived the Brown Act provisions requiring physical presence to the public in light of the pandemic, public comments have been encouraged to be made by email and phone call to the city clerk. Those received in such manner have been already provided to the council. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card, give it to the clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to speak on a workshop matter, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation on that matter. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements or going over the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers? We do not. And tech services, I'm going to need some help. I have nothing on my screen right now. So, next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Workshops.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Good afternoon. We are at an interesting checkpoint, and so I wanted to set some context that this is not our final report on our economic development strategic plan. We have other elements coming forward, but a good checkpoint in time to check in on this. And so we have Roger Dale from the Nelson-Dale Group here to give us a presentation. And following his remarks, Nick Ortiz from the Chamber will also give an update on the B-3K initiative and how we're making sure these two are well-aligned. So with that, Roger? Oh, Nick, excuse me. I had it backwards. Mr. Ortiz will begin for us.
Welcome, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you. And as -- it's the other PowerPoint. Thank you. And then she gets that put up. Just first off, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity -- sorry, Nick Ortiz with the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to provide an update on our joint project, B-3K, A Better Bakersfield and Boundless Kern: Regional Action for Economic Prosperity. But I also just wanted to take a moment and thank your team here at the city. Mr. Clegg, Assistant City Manager Jackie Kitchen, and Principal Economic Development Planner Cecilia Griego have been not just involved, but some of our most engaged participants and have really been excellent partners at moving this work forward and making sure that the city and their needs and their role in economic development are at the forefront of what we're doing.
We'll need just a moment, Mayor.
Go ahead and improvise, Mr. Ortiz.
Shadow puppets?
Sorry for the delay.
That's all right. I hate to say that PowerPoint is my crutch, but I would get started, although I'm sure I would miss something.
You could sing a song. Mr. Clegg, would you like to improvise some comments?
Mayor and council, we actually have a couple of options. We could -- you have the hard copy in front of you. We could speak to that. And for the public record, we'll ensure that it does, in fact, be -- the PowerPoint itself is included in the slides. We could also project the packet that you have through our Elmo system that would be on the screen. And that way, we could move forward in one of those two ways.
Okay. Don't mind. I'm just going to get my device. All right. If I can email -- can I email it directly to one of these computers? Okay. So I'll just get going. The second slide in the packet has -- the title says, "What is B-3K: A Better Bakersfield and Boundless Kern?" And so it is a public-private collaboration between a number of local organizations, the two largest local governments, the City of Bakersfield, the County of Kern, the two largest business organizations, the EDC and the Chamber, the two primary, largest institutions of higher learning, the Community College District and the University, and the Community Foundation. And it is an effort to develop a roadmap and an investment plan for economic growth and prosperity in the Bakersfield-Kern region. So the second slide has this diagram. It's not quite a Venn diagram, but it shows basically what is the alignment between all of these initiatives that are underway in the economic development space in Bakersfield and Kern County. Sure. And so B-3K is not -- is meant to really align these diverse economic development initiatives. So this was very serendipitous that as we started this process in early 2020, the county was starting an update of their comprehensive economic development strategy, and the city was starting the process of doing their economic development strategy on the city level. And the B-3K initiative is meant to kind of align those, I think. I'll try to manage it from here. So I apologize. I'm really not doing the best job of explaining this at the moment. All right. So just taking a step back to that slide that shows B-3K in the middle. So the impetus and the drive behind B-3K is to align these diverse economic development strategies. And we've been able to do that by working with the Nelson-Dale Group, who is doing both the city's economic development strategy and the county's SEDS update, so that we are utilizing some of the same assumptions. We are working on the same data sets, and we are, as much as we can, kind of harmonizing and doing stakeholder outreach and engagement together, so that we are working from a kind of shared perspective, both from the data and then also from the qualitative information that we're getting through stakeholder engagement about Bakersfield and Kern County's economy. And so B-3K is -- we have these teams and committees. And so our advisory team is this external group of advisors from the Brookings Institution, and they primarily are researchers and coordinating a good portion of the qualitative and quantitative research activities. We have the core team, which are the seven organizations that were on that first main slide. And then we have an executive committee of about 30 diverse organizations. We have a steering committee that's very broad-based, both geographically in terms of mix of businesses and in terms of groups that have been invited to participate in that, with over 100 representatives. We have a research committee, which is made up of those higher ed education organizations, local government, and KernCog that are really vetting the data and the findings. And then we have a set of to-be-announced topical and sector-specific work groups. Next slide. So here's the organizations that are involved in our executive committee. And as you can see, it's extremely broad, again, both geographically and in terms of which groups that are represented. And we have business, labor, philanthropy, local government that goes beyond just the city and the county, education and workforce development, and then our intermediaries and linking organizations. Next slide, please. So as we started this, one of the main issues, and I think when I talked to you all in the summer, when we first got this work underway, was the challenges that our economy was facing. So we are under enormous strain from both regulatory and market conditions, and add in the pandemic that we're experiencing and the economic fluctuations that have happened as a result of that. So we have economic and competitiveness challenges as a region. Now, one of the other things is how do we get beyond in economic development and improving the economy, thinking about just attracting just jobs in terms of job counts, and thinking about how do we attract quality jobs that provide pathways to prosperity? And then really, and what our hope is, is that over the long term, this is what this initiative can kind of facilitate, is how do we maximize the ROI that the economic development actors are putting into the region? So how do we make sure that the efforts that the city, for example, is undertaking in developing the strategy and spending a great deal of resources to get an economic development and community development department started, how is that not just supporting its work within the city, but how is the ecosystem of workforce and economic development supporting the city's goals as well? Next slide, please. So here's our progress to date. We've held a number of sector roundtables. So every major sector of the economy, we have had a roundtable with executives and leaders from that sector. We've done a range of one-on-one interviews with folks in Kern County. We've conducted a statistically valid poll, a survey of Kern County residents, so that they -- we can understand their views on economic and community issues. Thank you very much. And we've held learning sessions with regions. We had a learning session last month where we heard from Kansas City and upstate New York about their inclusive economic development planning strategies and the successes that they've had with them. And then also, just in terms of the next steps, the upcoming things, we are nearly complete with a market assessment, which is that quantitative and qualitative review. And we are continuing our community outreach through some town halls and some specific outreach into communities. We are working with some folks who are really active in southeast Bakersfield, do a southeast Bakersfield-focused one. We're reaching out to folks who are engaged in the downtown area, and then also in South Kern and in North Kern as well. Okay. So here's our timeline and milestones. So we are leaving what we call the discovery phase, so it's that data gathering phase, and moving into what we call strategy and governance. So that market assessment, which will be forthcoming, will really provide the foundation so that when we break up into topic or sector-specific work groups in the end of this year and the beginning of next year, we're working from this shared set of data. And then our hope is, is that we will have this strategy, the strategic plan, and an operating plan, and a governance structure for ongoing efforts in the spring of 2021. So again, I just wanted to walk you through the B-3K framework, how we're viewing this, and how the city's economic development planning fits into the B-3K framework. So again, we're looking at this from a little bit of a different lens than traditional economic development, which is really focused on assembling land, attracting new companies, getting them to bring jobs here. And we're looking at this from the standpoint of what are quality jobs that we can attract that provide pathways to career growth and to self-sufficiency, not just that we are attracting or growing the gross domestic product or gross metropolitan product of our region, but that we're doing it in a way that is really strategic to grow certain industries that provide those good-paying jobs. How are we developing more young firms and entrepreneurship in this region? And that translates into, again, these good, quality jobs providing pathways to prosperity, improving standard of living. And the final piece of it, which is really this inclusion piece, which is how do we make sure that everyone in Bakersfield and Kern County has the opportunity to participate in prosperity? You know, there are ways to think about this construct of improving prospects for especially those who have not been participating in economic prosperity in our region. There's kind of the redistributive model, but the model that we're taking is not how do you divvy up the pie you have, but how do you grow the pie and provide for everyone? So you can have growth without inclusion, but you cannot have inclusion without growth. So in order to make sure that everyone has this opportunity and pathway to prosperity, we must grow the economy overall. So again, this framework, what are we really trying to do? So what our hope is, is that the B-3K project will produce a strategy, and after that strategy, really sustained effort to advance prosperity in the region through reducing the number of struggling residents, increasing those quality and good jobs, and then expanding opportunity industries. So one of the things, I think when we were talking about this in the summer, there -- we were talking about, okay, we need to chart a course for the future. And I think Councilmember Weir, you noted that we can't chart a course somewhere if we don't know where we are. And so that's really what we've been doing and spending this time on and working on, is trying to figure out exactly where we sit now in terms of our economy, and then how do we leverage our strengths to plan for the future. So the Brookings Institution's kind of taken a look at this concept of income self-sufficiency. You know, what level of income is needed by family type to be self-sufficient in the Bakersfield-Kern region, and it varies depending on what your family looks like. And so if you can see, childcare, depending on how old your children are, can be as much, if not more, than what you pay for housing. And so a family that has a teenager looks very different than a family that has two preschool-aged children. So again, trying to get a sense of what self-sufficiency looks like, and what's the metric, and what's the kind of mean for what types of income do families need to be self-sufficient in Kern. And one of the things that we've realized and we've taken a look at is that we have close to half of the residents in the Bakersfield-Kern region are what are considered struggling. They're either struggling workers or in struggling families. And even in some of the most distressed regions in the country, this is extremely high. And our folks who are researchers from the Brookings Institutions and their work in various metros across the country, this is one of the highest rates of struggling residents that they've seen. And as you can see, especially when it comes to children and young adults, we have a significant number of them. And then for workers, for struggling workers specifically, you know, age, race, education level really makes a difference in terms of your likelihood to be in that struggling So when we think about self-sufficiency and across all of those family types, we see that targeting a wage rate of around $20 an hour can lift a majority of the residents, a majority of especially the children in Kern County and the Bakersfield-Kern resident region into self-sufficiency, lift them out of that struggling category. Now again, a more redistributive model would be, well, we just set $20.20 the minimum wage. But that does not actually create any type of economic activity or economic prosperity that is, again, divvying up the pie we already have. So what we need to focus on, and what the hope is, is that by knowing that this is the target that we need to reach, that we start to work on attracting and growing the types of jobs that get us to that wage rate by growing the economy overall. So it's this construct of opportunity jobs and opportunity industries. So you'll see throughout this and in the future, when we release this market assessment, that there is this concept of good jobs or quality jobs that is a theme throughout. And a good job meets three criteria. It is providing that self-sufficient annual wage. It's providing health benefits, which are really a proxy for other types of benefits that employers provide that provide for a family, and it provides a career pathway that will lead to another good job of equal or greater wage in the future. So someone who is on, you know, some type of program, whether it is TANF or SNAP or Medicaid, that would not be a good job. Somebody who is -- who has a good job would not be eligible income-wise for any of those government programs. A promising job is one that doesn't necessarily meet all of those three requirements, but provides a pathway to a good job in the future. And then everything else is kind of limited or labeled as other jobs. So in Kern, as you can see, most of the jobs that exist are these other jobs. They are not these good, quality, or promising jobs. So again, our challenge in terms of providing that wage rate and that self-sufficient income to lift families up in Kern. So again, opportunity jobs and opportunity industries. And these types of industries, they have an above-average amount of good or quality jobs. Opportunity industries are what are called tradable sectors. So they produce something that is exported, like in our economy, for instance, you would think of oil, or ag, or logistics. Most of the time, opportunity industries and industries that provide a significant amount of good or quality jobs and promising jobs are not locally serving, but there are some outliers, locally-serving industries that provide a significant portion of quality and promising jobs exist, like healthcare and government in certain instances. And then again, these industries provide a pathway for wage growth and career growth that is really accessible to anyone and a multitude of educational backgrounds, which is important for us because we do have some educational attainment issues in our region. So this is kind of an eye chart, but what this seeks to kind of break down is by the main industry sectors in the Bakersfield-Kern region, what is the percentage, the proportion mix of, you know, good jobs by skill level and promising jobs and other jobs. And as you can see, a good portion of those jobs are kind of concentrated into those tradable sectors. But when we take a look at, not by proportion of industry, but by number of jobs in total, what you see is that one of the largest employers is government, and one of the largest producers of quality and promising jobs is government. It is not, in terms of sheer numbers, those tradable sectors of the economy. Now, an industry like oil and gas, you'll see, has a pretty significant number in terms of total number of those good and promising jobs to their overall employment portion. And they do produce a significant amount of economic activity because they pay so well. But when you get a sense of the jobs that are offered across our economy, you see that we do have a bit of a gap. In fact, when you take a look at the amount of good jobs that are available and the amount of workers that we have, we actually have to double the amount of good jobs in 10 years in order to try to make up this gap of nearly 100,000 struggling workers who do not currently have access to a career pathway. And job creation on that scale is a huge task. And again, it's made more difficult, more challenging because of the headwinds faced by specifically the energy industry and the overall educational attainment of our region. So that sounded like not very great news, I will admit. But I think the good part here is that the region has organized itself, is interested in improving this prospect. And this is why this initiative, B-3K, and the city's investment in their own economic development strategy and the economic and community development department and activities are so important going forward. So this market assessment now tells us where we are based on this construct of we want to attract quality jobs. We need to do that through attracting these opportunity or growing these opportunity industries. And so now, the next step is figuring out which opportunity industries offer the most -- they're the biggest bright spots for us. They have the potential to actually produce with some strategic interventions and investment, and then devising some strategies in order to do just that. So the forthcoming market assessment will really be an analysis of the economy that does a couple of things. First, it's going to evaluate our current ecosystem of economic and workforce development. And there will be some criticisms of our region and some of the actors within it in terms of how we have performed to date. And some of that falls on me and my organization, and some of that falls on other organizations that are involved in economic development specifically. So it is geared to give us an unvarnished and somewhat critical eye about how we can improve by aligning some of these strategic efforts in the future. It'll provide guidance, again, on these opportunity industries and quality job growth, and serve as a platform for local strategy development. So, you know, just to pull back, you know, the curtain a bit on what is forthcoming, they've -- our group has done a great deal of research around specific industry clusters, and they've looked at a number of them. And there's going to be findings on a great deal of the industry clusters that exist in the Bakersfield-Kern region. Potential target industries for us are going to be energy production and innovation, trying to leverage the existing talent and the existing foundation from oil and gas. And that is probably going to result in recommendations around things like carbon capture sequestration, renewable fuels, and utilizing biomass in order to produce energy. Where they probably will not be recommending that we place big strategic bets around economic development is around renewable energy, because the job counts and the job quality just are not there. Around in East Kern, in aerospace, there's going to be some findings around that industry and specifically the threats to that industry continuing to have a foothold in eastern Kern County, given the competitiveness of New Mexico, and now the central coast in terms of trying to rival eastern Kern and Mojave specifically for commercial space development. Advanced manufacturing, really with an emphasis around maybe metalworking, maybe expanding or leveraging our logistics capabilities to not just move goods, but produce them to be moved, and potentially maybe some value-added ag. Even though we do have a huge agricultural sector here in Kern, we do not do a whole lot of value-add in terms of innovative value-add. We do some food processing, but we are not doing things that are really providing, again, those good, quality jobs. And then potentially around this concept of a second office or outsourced services for businesses. So this is some of the potential target industries that they're thinking of. Obviously, there are findings on subsets of these, whether it's energy, aerospace, manufacturing. Obviously, there are findings on subsets of these, whether it's energy, aerospace, manufacturing, this second office services, logistics are in there as well, and a couple of others. And then, just again, to show you some of the research that's been done and how this may look in the future as we get towards strategy, you know, there's been a lot of efforts around entrepreneurship in Bakersfield and Kern to grow entrepreneurship and to really try to encourage young firm generation. Young firm generation is an important part of any region's kind of innovation cluster and net new job growth. One of the things that we kind of need to distinguish is, when we're looking at these types of young firms, what we want are, again, not necessarily these locally-serving firms, but firms that are involved in innovation and potentially are leveraging one of those traded sectors. So a bit of a bright spot in Bakersfield and in the Bakersfield-Kern region, we are outperforming our economic competitors in terms of metro areas, in terms of jobs created by these young firms. But we are actually, though we're even with the rest of the inland California, we actually lag all of them in terms of the staying power of those jobs. So we create these young firms, they employ people, but they are failing or not being able to provide the same level of jobs at rates that lag our economic competitors. And again, these small firms are really the way that we can grow the economy. So just to give you, for instance, you know, what, here is some data, here is a finding, what would be next would be, how do we develop and create some interventions and some strategies around wrapping around services around those young firms so that we can, now that we understand the problem, help them survive and help them to continue their employment? So just for a kind of theoretical sense of what is next for B3K. So again, and I'm wrapping up here, just to give you a sense of where we are, where we're going, we are leaving this discovery phase, we are moving into the strategy and governance phase, we are going to be releasing this market assessment to our partners later this month, the end of November, and then in December through the spring of 2021, working on these working groups. So again, just to kind of put a point on it, and I will say that Roger Dale, Mr. Dale and the Nadelson-Dale Group have been also great partners as an extension of the city team. They have been working hand in glove with our researchers at the Brookings Institution. They've been keeping us up to date about their progress as they meet with all of you and work with all of your stakeholders at the city level and are really integrated into this, and we are really doing this in a very, very collaborative way. So that, again, the city's economic strategy is not just really on its own, that we're bringing the other components of, whether it's organizations like mine, or the Economic Development Corporation, or the educational institutions, or even the other municipalities in Kern County, around the shared vision of the economy so that we can create this ecosystem where the city's economic development strategy isn't just standalone, it's being supported by all of those other things. And we're trying to do that also with the broader look for the county and, as we can, with the other municipalities in the Bakersfield-Kern region. So thank you very much. Thanks you for bearing with me and getting through my crutch of needing the PowerPoint slides. Thank you for sitting through all of that data dump. I'll turn it over to Roger now, and I assume if there are any questions, we'll do that after Roger's presentation. But again, thank you for your time and really thank you for your support as the council of this work and for your amazing staff's partnership on moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Clegg, do you wish to make any comments before Mr. Dale?
Nothing, Mayor.
So good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm really excited to be here this afternoon and give you an update on the process for our part of this work. And as Nick just described, this really is, I think, a unique opportunity for us to do the type of strategic plan that we've done for many other cities, but in this case, not only our process, but also your potential process after we're done in terms of implementation is going to be much stronger because of the work that's being done by B3K and the potential to plug the city's strategy into a regional vision and initiatives that will support that. So just to introduce myself again, I'm Roger Dale with the Nadelson-Dale Group, and I've had the pleasure of speaking with most of you individually over the last few weeks, and we'll get the last couple of you in the coming weeks here as well, but wanted to take this opportunity to talk about the specific work that our firm is doing, which is, plugs into the regional B3K plan as a city-specific economic development strategy. So we're looking for opportunities to focus the effort on policies and programs that the city can implement, to take advantage of the opportunities that we identify, and also to begin to chip away at the challenges that Nick has just described in terms of the need to create more jobs and better-paying jobs. And I'll talk a little bit about that now. So just to give you an overview of what I'd like to discuss, whereas the B3K process is county-wide or looking at the whole region, our process is looking specifically at the city of Bakersfield and also individual sub-areas or neighborhoods within the city. And so we would anticipate when we get to the end of our process, we're not there yet, that we will have a recommended strategy for the city that looks at taking advantages of the opportunities, beginning to tackle the constraints that the city faces, and also looking at very practical and specific solutions at the sub-area or neighborhood level as the needs are identified. So I'll talk this evening about some of those sub-area geographic indications of demographic and economic conditions. We have also done some real estate market studies for commercial and industrial land uses to assist city staff in anticipating how much demand you might expect for new development over the next 15 years or so. And this is not intended to be a feasibility analysis for specific projects, but to make sure that the city's land use policies and zoning, et cetera, are aligned with the likely demand so that you're in a good position to respond to it. As with B3K, we're also looking at potential target industries or industry clusters, and Nick described where they are in that process, and I'll kind of explain how we're fitting into that. And we have also been participating in a range of stakeholder outreach activities, and I'd like to give you some initial feedback from that. And then finally, I'll mention that our process will include a Bakersfield-specific economic development marketing strategy. So in other words, how do you identify? We will have identified the types of business targets, the types of development targets that are opportunities for the city, and we're working with a marketing agency that will translate that into a practical, what they're describing as a marketing blueprint for economic development. So, and I won't get too analytical on these maps, but I'm just want to share with you to give you a sense of the types of data that we're looking at in our process and how that will ultimately translate into some strategy recommendations. So we've done a demographic background report that basically looks at your resident population, your resident workforce, and identified how conditions vary in different parts of the city. So for example, the map that's on the screen now is just a, shows where the population densities are different in different parts of the city, and basically the darker colors in the Bakersfield part of the map are the most dense population areas in terms of people per census block. And this won't be surprising to you, but you can see that, you know, where the concentrations are, but what I'd like to do is compare that to also the resident income levels. So you can see here, the darker colors represent higher income levels, and the lower income levels are in the lighter shaded area. So you can see, and this is, again, not a surprise, but in the south and east portions of the city is where lower-income households are concentrated. We've also been looking at the concentrations of jobs by different industries. And again, I won't try to walk through this details on the map, and we've got, this is all available in the reports that we've generated. But what's interesting about this map, the dots and different colors represent different jobs or different industries, and the larger dots are larger concentrations of those. And you'll see, again, in that area of the city where there is population, but it's relatively low income in the south and southeast, is generally devoid of a major job concentration. So there's an issue with income and also access to jobs. Now, we know that people can live in one neighborhood and work in another, but one issue that the city has asked us to look at is what are opportunities for creating locally-based job opportunities in areas that don't have the concentrations that are at the citywide averages? I mentioned that we've also done some real estate market demand studies and addressing the land uses of retail, including restaurant, hotel development, office, and industrial. And I'm going to describe in a minute where we are in those, they're just preliminary numbers, and we have, at this point, done a citywide forecast over the next 15 years how much new development demand might the city expect in those categories. And later, those will be, later in our process, we'll break those down to sub-areas or neighborhoods where there might be opportunities for new development, which in turn could potentially create new jobs in different parts of the city. So first, I'll start with retail, and just to put this into context, we have looked at an analysis that evaluates the city's existing population, the population in the larger Kern County trade area, because as you know, you attract retail spending from outside the city to a significant extent, and also some demand from highway travel. And to put it in perspective, we estimate that currently the city has about $5.8 billion in annual retail sales that you capture. The potential is somewhat more than that, something like $6.3 billion. So that other demand is demand that could be captured. In other words, you've got some categories where you're very strong, some retail sales categories, others where if you attracted that same amount of outside support, you could do more sales. And we estimate that that gap between $5.8 billion in sales and the potential $6.3 billion could theoretically support about a million square feet of additional retail space in the market in the city today. And as your population grows and as the county secondary area population grows over the next 15 years, that could translate to about 3 million square feet of additional retail space. And so, sounds like a big number, but when you spread it over a city this size, that's, you know, several shopping centers or maybe smaller, more shopping centers, but in smaller configurations. There are currently several major projects on the books as being planned or in the process that total about 2.1 million square feet. So really, we're looking at maybe an additional million above what is already known. And of course, we're very cautious about the condition of the retail industry right now. There are certainly challenges with getting shopping center tenants, and the number of large-scale tenants that are available out there as anchor tenants is shrinking. But a number of these proposed projects have indicated that the status of them at this point is kind of questionable, but they are, in theory at least, still planned. What's interesting, though, is we've run this by the development community, and I'll talk more about the meeting we had with them later, and they basically concur, though, that despite the challenges in a city of this size with the anticipated amounts of growth, there will be needs for additional brick-and-mortar retail. And so this is kind of the building blocks that the city could consider as part of, as neighborhood-level strategies, different neighborhoods could capture a portion of that future retail demand. As it relates to office and industrial, again, to kind of put it into context, currently the city has about 9 million square feet of office space, and at least pre-pandemic, the vacancy was very healthy, about 5%. And we're projecting over the next 15 years, we've looked at a more conservative and a more aggressive scenario, but still in the range of 1 million or 1 million to 1.2 million square feet of new space. So you basically go from 9 million to 10 million or so over the next 15 years. Industrial, your existing inventory, we estimated about 26 million square feet, and again, kind of did a range of scenarios there, but would expect that to grow by maybe 6 to 9 million square feet over the next 15 years. And in part, that's being driven by demand for logistics. And I should mention with all of these, we have not yet gone through this, the next step, which will be to kind of identify the actual physical capacity in the city to build all this in terms of zoning and available land. So in the larger region, of course, logistics is a high-demand activity and generates a lot of space per employee, and so that demand is there. The next step is to kind of see how feasible that is to really capture that in the city. Nick Ortiz mentioned that the B3K team has done some initial work on target industries, and we have actually done our own process in looking at target industries. We've certainly been coordinating with the B3K team and comparing notes, but it's interesting because we approached it slightly differently, and whereas they're focusing on county-wide opportunities, we're, again, specifically focused on the city. But we came up with fairly similar lists of what we think are the most promising industries, and I'll compare those in a moment. But we've looked at basically what types of firms have grown in recent years here, what is strong here compared to statewide and national averages, and what are the prospects for growth given global trends for different industries? And so, you know, in Kern County and Bakersfield, we know that oil and ag have historically been mainstay industries, and that's part of the challenge because those industries have challenges, and the dependence on those locally becomes, has been a huge asset in the past, becomes more of a challenge because when you talk about the need to create more better-paying jobs, it's one thing to do that if you're starting with a stable base, but if you have the prospect of potentially losing a very significant source of good-paying jobs, then it just compounds the amount of work that needs to be done to stay even and ultimately get ahead. We've also looked at where, from just a practical standpoint, where would firms come from that might consider a location in Bakersfield? And we took a specific look at the types of industries that might be exiting from Los Angeles or other more urban parts of Southern California, and in many cases, as we know, those are firms that are leaving the state altogether. But we looked at which of those might be opportunities to intercept before they go out of state to come to a place that has many advantages from a business cost and functionality standpoint. And then we are also concerned with factors that make your community more attractive to a prospective workforce, and one of those issues is mobility, and I'll talk about some ideas there as well. And then the final thing I'll mention in terms of the types of criteria we looked at for targeting industries is where we are, like the B3K team, interested in what opportunities Bakersfield has for expanding its base of technology firms. And we agree that those things are present here now, in some cases in kind of an embryonic stage, but they represent opportunities for growth given the right support system. One concept for expanding Bakersfield's attractiveness to technology firms would be to adopt a theme that the city could develop a competitive advantage in. And as an example, we're very interested in the concept of automated transportation or mobility, things like autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles, other types of technologies that would have several benefits. First of all, those are industries that are growing and potentially create jobs in their own right, but they also can support tech adoption in other create jobs in their own right, but they also can support tech adoption in other industries that are relevant already to Kern County, like agriculture, oil, logistics, and aerospace. So looking at mobility, technology as a way to leverage those existing industries. And just the idea of creating an image of a city that has a focus on mobility and technology related to mobility can enhance your appeal to the types of workers, of the workforce, that would be attractive to firms that would be in those types of industries. And I guess generally would contribute to the image of the city as a progressive, proactive, and forward-thinking place, all of which sell well for you in terms of attracting firms, but perhaps even more importantly, attracting a workforce that would support those firms. So we have looked at four clusters of industries that would be potential targets: logistics, advanced business services, manufacturing, and environmental services. And I think of the four, three of them line up pretty, pretty closely to the ones that the B3K team has identified. The one that's perhaps different is logistics, I don't believe shows up on their list. And it's a point for discussion, because there's a, I think there is recognition that, that that is a market opportunity for Kern County. It is something that arguably will happen with, with or without a lot of public sector investment. It's just a, that's where the demand is, and you're well located for it. And so, it arguably is not something that would need a lot of strategic focus. I think there's also would be concerns about the quality or the, the pay scale of jobs associated with logistics, and compared to these other industries, it might be a lower priority target. But nevertheless, just based on our, our screening criteria, which are basically what is the market demand or market opportunity, logistics does show up. Advanced business services, manufacturing, I'll give some examples, and also environmental services, which would overlap, I think, well with existing activities here, as well as some of the things Nick described in terms of renewables. So these are examples of the types of industries that could happen under those categories. And we talked at, at kind of a big picture level, these major clusters, logistics, manufacturing, business services. Those are in turn made up of many, many specific industries. In fact, there's something like 1,100 individual industries that are recognized in the U.S. economy. And we've identified specific things that show up on our system of, of measuring strength as potentials for Bakersfield. But I should emphasize, these are just examples. So logistics, something, an example, obvious example would be fulfillment centers or e-commerce, which not only can potentially create jobs and investment, but can also contribute to a, to the tax base. Advanced business services, I think Nick alluded to the concept of back office or second office, and we concur with that. Computer systems design services. And a lot of these things we've identified, not just because they show up statistically as strong, but just thematically, they, they link to other things that we've identified. So for example, computer systems designs would link well to that mobility theme that I, I mentioned earlier. Then in the area of manufacturing, so the first one stands out as kind of a, maybe an oddball, it's non-chocolate confectionery. And again, we're just showing that as an example. We, we think that food processing and food manufacturing might be opportunities. As Nick emphasized, you'd want to try to look towards the, the higher tech aspects of that in terms of job quality. But there are a number of things, number of areas, and this is just an example, as I mentioned, where you've got potential strength in an industry that's growing statewide and could be captured here in a, in a larger scale in, in, in Bakersfield. Then we get to other things under the manufacturing heading, like aircraft parts, electric motors, navigation and detection equipment, and instruments manufacturing. Some of those relate well to the aerospace cluster that's established in East Kern County, and there may be opportunities to strengthen that connection between east and west in the, in the county. And then again, some relate well to the mobility concept or type, transportation type technology. Environmental services, I think the example Nick gave about carbon sequestration could be a very exciting opportunity for the area. Research and development in physical engineering and life sciences, and then R&amp;D and biotech, which could have a direct connection to agriculture. Everything that I've just described in terms of target industries is a preliminary list. We're going to go through some additional screening of what really would make the most sense competitively, and also what should the priorities be in terms of investment, in terms of marketing and other programs. Part of that next step of screening the targets will be to look at competitive places that are, in many cases, positioning themselves to attract or grow the same types of industries. And the places that we are proposing to evaluate include Fresno, Salinas, Stockton, and Visalia within the, the Valley area. And then in the inland empire, we're specifically going to look at Ontario, but we may look at other cities that are competitive, especially as it relates to logistics and, and manufacturing related to logistics. And then some other regions, generally Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, Ventura County, Riverside, San Bernardino, inland, the inland empire, and then the larger LA area. And we're going to be looking at these from several perspectives. First of all, some of these places are competitors. Some of them are places where you might attract from. We've given the Los Angeles example. And we want to see, well, given what they've got to offer, and what Bakersfield has to offer, how well positioned are you to compete now for these industries? And what might you need to improve in terms of your marketing program to be competitive in those sectors? We're going to also specifically look at the marketing messages that these places are presenting, how the images are presenting to, from a site selector's perspective, what types of incentives are offering, and again, what does that tell us about what Bakersfield is most realistically well positioned to attract? And where you can, are there ways that Bakersfield can make additional investments in marketing and incentives and other programs that would make you more competitive compared to these places? Briefly, wanted to talk about the stakeholder outreach. And it's one of the great opportunities we've had in coordinating with B3K is that they have done, as Nick described, a number of roundtables and other types of stakeholder outreach. And we've had the opportunity to sit in on a number of those meetings. We have also, for our part of the study, did a Bakersfield-specific roundtable with the development community. And then as I've, as you know, we've had the chance to speak with all of you, or most of you, and hope to catch the rest of you within the next week or so. What is still to come as far as our outreach is getting down to more neighborhood level input. So talking to, for example, downtown stakeholders or other southeast Bakersfield stakeholders, other places where there might be unique opportunities or unique challenges to reflect those in the strategic plan that we're developing. And I won't attempt to summarize everything that each group has said, but some, some, several themes have come across fairly strong across all the types of stakeholder outreach that we've done to date, and just wanted to kind of describe to you what some of those are. And by and large, it's, it's very encouraging. First of all, we had a, a really excellent opportunity to meet with the development community, had about 20 individuals representing major development, commercial industrial firms, brokerages, and development services firms like engineers and, and environmental firms. And one message that came across clearly from that is, first of all, they, they agree that there are, there are likely to be, there is likely to be strong demand for additional development in the foreseeable future, or at least the midterm. We know we're all in a, in a challenging era right now, but that Bakersfield is going to continue to grow. And was especially exciting to hear that they were very complimentary about the city, your staff, and the way you process development. And I can tell you that I have been doing this work for about 30 years, have done these types of meetings all over the Western U.S. and other parts of the U.S. And usually, when you have a meeting with the development community, it becomes a complaint session about all the things the city is doing wrong. We couldn't, we really didn't get a lot of that. We got a lot of compliments. You know, there's some certain, some specific things that might be helpful that we can talk about, even further streamlining or improving the city's processes. But by and large, that's one of the advantages of why they're excited to be working in Bakersfield, and why they think the opportunities are, are good. So you can all take that as, as a compliment. And we will work with them to continue to identify ways to make it even better. But by and large, that's a huge selling point for Bakersfield compared to other parts, especially of California. And that's high degree of competitiveness in terms of business friendliness can be leveraged for industry diversification. And generally, there's, the types of industries that we've identified, and the Brookings Institution has identified through the, the technical work, are things that people, even without looking at the numbers, told us, yeah, we think we should be pursuing these types of industries. So that was, that was great, that there's a vision for that type of diversification. As we've mentioned, there are tech companies here, and Nick showed some very promising data about, you know, the amount of startups, employment in startups is, is strong for the initial startup of a company. Where there seems to be need for further improvement is the support system that would allow those startups to survive and to grow and create more jobs and more opportunities over the years. And that's something that's, again, kind of a, a practical opportunity, because there are specific types of programs that the city and the region could consider to, to create that support ecosystem in, in a place where we have good reason to believe that it would be a good investment because of the initial startup activity that we're seeing. Talent attraction is something that, in terms of workforce, becomes a discussion point. Whenever you're talking about technology firms, the question is, do we have enough technology workers, or workers who can be trained for technology, to support that? And there are concerns about that and this, the, the system that supports that. So we would anticipate both at the regional level and the city level, that there will be a focus on workforce development for your existing workforce, but also things that would create a city and an environment that makes it more attractive for outside workforce to come in to consider employment opportunities in Bakersfield. And in that regard, I think that we, we got some feedback about the images of Bakersfield. And what's interesting is that if you talk to people who are here, and they know about the city, and they work here, they're excited about it. And especially some of the, the smaller technology firms we talked to, those are people that chose to come to Bakersfield, often because they had a family or, or personal connection here. But they like, they like being here, and they want, they want the opportunity to continue to grow their firms here if the, the larger economic conditions could support it. It's a little bit different when you, when you talk to people outside of Bakersfield. It doesn't necessarily register as a technology-oriented place. So there's a, there's a, maybe a disconnect there between what, what people on the ground are experiencing and what the larger world's impression is of technology-type opportunities in Bakersfield. And that's something that can be addressed over time. As we've discussed, opportunities and conditions vary by sub-area. And, you know, we've, we've gotten, as I've said, very positive responses overall about the city's business friendliness. Some concerns about, for example, during the recent pandemic response, about the, the availability of resources in different neighborhoods. And these were not necessarily city-type programs, so I don't want to give the impression that those were the types of things we heard, but just the access to types of funding that would be available to support businesses during this crisis may not have been available in all parts of the city at, at equal levels. Very interesting that there's a strong interest in quality-of-life initiatives among most of the people we've talked to, that that's, that's recognized as a legitimate aspect of economic development. And that's, again, a direct connection to the potential for attracting different types of companies and the, the types of workers who would support them. One thing that I said that there was almost unanimous mention of is how important the downtown is. What a, what a great opportunity your downtown is, both as a business location, but probably more importantly, as part of that quality of life. You've got kind of a quality, historic, genuine downtown that there's, there's need to continue to invest in it and prove it, and different visions about how you would do that. But that would definitely be something that we saw a lot of consensus about, that that is a, a genuine asset in Bakersfield. It's been leveraged to some extent so far. There's a lot of work still to do, but that that would be a high priority in terms of continued city focus for marketing and other investments. And then I'll wrap up with talking about the marketing plan that our project will include. And our subcontractor for this part of the work is Golden Shovel Agency. They are not only a marketing agency, but they specifically focus on economic development. And again, in my experience in doing this for a number of years, there are firms that can sell Coca-Cola or consumer products that think they can do city marketing or economic development marketing, and a lot of times, they don't quite get what the, what the needs are. This is a firm that has chosen to, over a number of years, to exclusively serve cities and other economic development organizations on business attraction, tourism development, and other economic development-specific marketing. We and they are both very aware of the existing or recent work you've done with North Star, that kind of the regional branding work. And so the intent is not to replace that or to duplicate that, but to build on it. And so, Golden Shovel is doing a survey process. And again, they're going to be careful about not duplicating. They're asking the same questions to the same people as North Star did. But basically, they want to understand, how does Bakersfield talk about itself? How do other people talk about Bakersfield? And how should we be talking about it when we're trying to sell it as a business location or as a place for workers to live? And once we've kind of worked with our team, and with city staff, and with other stakeholders to get focus on that, and again, it's specific to economic development, they will then translate that into a marketing blueprint that has specific target audiences. And in this case, the audiences are basically firms or industries, and build messages to reach each of those audiences, and through a variety of media, so print, digital, and social media. And that part of the work, we would inspect to be connected with your regional partners who are also doing marketing. So the Chamber, the current EDC, and others that have some interface with your marketing process, their perspectives will be included as well, so that you're again, building on what's happening regionally, not kind of coming off with a separate message, but working within it to deliver the very specific opportunities that Bakersfield might offer for prospective firms. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this afternoon. Thank you for your time, and appreciate the opportunity we've had to work with the city. The staff has been great. The B3K, B3K team has been really great partners in this. And I think at this point, either Nick or I would be glad to answer any questions you have about our presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. We'll go to the public first. Madam Clerk, did you receive any public statement cards? No. So we have none. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments? I don't see any requests to speak right now, so I see, I, I don't see any. Mr. Clegg, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, this is a checkpoint update. We'll be bringing back lots more information with details. I would just summarize, in interest of time, a couple of key points, that from my experience, the amount of good data and really strong data analysis provided by both Brookings and Adelsundale is well above average. These are really smart folks, really looking at the numbers in really intelligent ways. And I think as you follow the data and you look at the target industries, it's, you know, it's not about trying to become someone else. We're not going to become East Kern, but there are industry, you know, areas that we can leverage from what they've done. We're not trying to become Silicon Valley either, but there are some core business support services that we are really well-suited to. And I think that this interrelationship between the clusters, the target industries, and our existing industries is what makes this really strong. And it rings true for me that we can build off of the talent that we have in this community, and some of the growth opportunities that we have in this community to go after some of those target industries that are going to make a lot of sense, but specifically to us. So again, the, the level of analysis is well above average on this, and we're excited to continue to bring forward more. continue to bring forward more and more specific recommendations of where we go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Dale. We appreciate all of your input and certainly the, the data collection is very, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Closed session. A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding Christopher Messick versus Civil Service Board for Bakersfield Police Department. B, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go into-
You're in a closed session.
Yes, thank you. And we'll see you soon.